Morning, everyone. I see our council is all present this morning, so we'd like to welcome everyone to the City Council Study Session for August the 27th. In looking at the agenda for this meeting, the first item on our agenda is to review our agenda for our August 31st council meeting. So, council, if you could please refer to that document. Currently, there's nothing off of the consent agenda, but council, is there any, I know we've got some interesting things on this. Mr. Brady, were you planning on any presentations on any of the items on the, for Monday's agenda?
Yes, Mayor, we can. We probably should bring you up to speed on item with Eco Mesa.
Yeah, I was thinking 4A, ECO Mesa. I was, it looks like there's a presentation attached to the, to the materials.
Right, so we can go, you want to go there now?
That, I don't see anyone jumping to talk about something else yet, so why don't we go ahead and skip to 4A and learn more about ECO Mesa?
All right, we have Jeff and Jeff to present that to you.
Do you know which folder that is in? Hold on, we're trying to find the presentation.
We don't have a presentation.
Just talk it through.
Hmm?
Just talk, just talk.
All right, while we're looking for that, I'm sorry, Mayor, while we're looking for that, good morning, Mayor, Council. Jeff McVay, manager of Downtown Transformation. With me today is Jeff Robbins, one of our Downtown Transformation Project Managers. As you remember, we came in front of council July 8th, and we gave an initial presentation of some of the major, or primary deal points for development agreement and purchase agreement with the developer called East Valley, East Valley Developers LLC for a project called ECO Mesa. Thank you, Natalie. I only, I only missed the intro slide, so that's good. We want to start out today by giving you an overview of the project details. These are, these are terms of our development agreement, but they're also a good way to summarize what the project and how far it's come since the last time we presented to you. And Mr. Robbins will get us started.
All right, Mayor, Council, it's good to be with you today.
ECO Mesa is a multi-use development that will be a minimum of seven stories and a minimum of 85,564 square feet of rentable residential area. We anticipate that there will be 102 dwelling units, and of those 102 dwelling units, 30 of those must be two-bedroom. We want to point out that while the number of units may change depending on, as we can keep going through design and through market studies, that the minimum of the 85,564 square feet of rentable space will not change. For parking, there will be 206 total parking spaces. 130 of those are private for the residents who will live in this development, and then 76 of those are public parking spaces. Same thing with this one, we want to point out that 130, that 130 number that are private, that may be adjusted down to what the zoning allows. However, those 76 private space, or public space, excuse me, cannot be reduced. And the reason for that 76 number is because there are currently 76 spaces on that lot, and one of the terms of the agreement was that we had to have 100% replacement of all of the spaces there. So those will be coming back. The only difference is we will have structured parking instead of surface. The total building area is approximately 113,500 square feet, and the construction cost is estimated to be about $30 million. That includes hard costs and soft costs. We also want to point out that the elevations that you are seeing throughout the presentation, these represent the last submittal to the Planning Department, and we anticipate that the final product will look very similar to what you see today, although there may be some minor changes. For the commercial aspect of the project, we are anticipating 3,400 square feet of ground floor commercial with a minimum of 2,750 square feet. There will also be an onsite leasing and administration office that will comprise 950 square feet of space. The project will also have amenities for the residents, including a fitness center, community room, and a pool. So as, as the name ECO Mesa alludes to, that this is a highly sustainable urban design, the project will have a full rooftop solar array, a gray water capture system, so essentially when it rains, part of that rainwater will be kept onsite to irrigate the plants that are there. There's a car share and a bike share program. There's energy consumption by unit. What that essentially is, is it's a display outside of every unit so that the residents know how their daily habits are affecting their energy consumption. And the hope there is that as you understand what you're doing is affecting your energy consumption, that you will change your habits and use less energy. This is also going to be designed to a LEED Gold Standard equivalent design or higher, although we want to note that we are not requiring them to go through with the, with the certification for LEED. So one of the things that attracted the developer to this area was that it's in an arts district. And this, what you're seeing on the screen now, this is their inspiration for what they'd like to do to help enhance the arts district even more. And so if you, on the left of the screen, you can see that, you can just see some kind of screening panels there, but they don't, you just look through into the garage, right? But when you come at it from a different angle, say you're walking down the alley, you get to the right place, and all of a sudden, an image appears. And so this is, this can change, this image can change whether you're coming from the east side of the alley or the west side of the alley, and it's just kind of put on to the different screening elements on this parking garage. The developer has reached out to local artists to find an image that's a little more appropriate to Mesa besides maybe the tugboat shown.
Mayor and Council, in addition to the, the minimum project requirements for this development that are part of the development agreement, purchase agreement, there is also additional requirements of the developer. They are to use all city services, so we will have 102 new units of residential and 4,000 square feet of commercial that will be using our city water, sewer, solid waste, and energy resources. They will also become a new member of the Downtown Mesa Association, and, and will pay their annual assessments to the Special Improvement District. In the event, during the term of the G-Plat lease, which we'll talk about later, we've also included they'll continue to pay that, that SID assessment during that G-Plat lease term. Knowing that this is a, is a important city asset, that surface parking lot is an important city asset, we also have included in the purchase agreement and the special warranty deed a reverter clause, so that in the event that the developer does not commence construction in a timely manner, we are able to, to take the property back for the same cost at which the developer purchased it from us. That sale price is $325,000. That is appraised value from appraisal that we had completed at the beginning of this project. In addition, this is going to be reviewed and approved by zoning through the downtown Form Based Code. One of our obligations as a city is to opt into the Form Based Code so that the project can receive its zoning approval, and we'll likely do that shortly after council's action on the development agreement. While it's not a, a term, while it's not an agreement that's in front of council today, I do want to note that back in July, when we came and presented, the, the approval of a G-Plat lease was a, was a important condition of the developer to allow the project to move forward. We are finalizing our negotiations on that G-Plat lease, and we intend to bring that forward to you in October, late October, early November. It is an eight-year abatement G-Plat lease, but we have completed the economic benefit analysis necessary by state statute, and it does meet the requirements of improving the property value by over 100% and increasing, or providing revenues to the city and all other taxing authorities that exceed those property taxes abated. The, the importance of this G-Plat to the project is evidenced by the fact that in the purchase agreement, the developer, as a condition precedent to the developer purchasing the property and a condition precedent to the city selling the property is the approval of a G-Plat lease agreement. I know Mr. Robbins already brought this up, but this is an important element to us. The fact that through this development, that the city is, is being provided a perpetual public easement for the use of this parking lot, 76 spaces within this parking garage for public purposes, is very important to us and, and, and a very nice incentive that's the developers providing to the city. In addition, the city will be saving a little bit on maintenance costs for the first eight years during the term of the G-Plat lease. The developer will maintain normal maintenance and operations and maintenance of the parking garage. The developer will be maintaining the structure itself, however, in perpetuity. In addition, this parking lot currently has three electric car charging stations available to the public. As part of their construction, the developer will extend the infrastructure necessary to allow us to have those three spaces. In addition, they'll extend enough infrastructure that should the demand be there that we could add another six electric charging stations within those parking spaces. One thing that I want to make sure is clear on the record, I think there was some confusion after July's study session presentation about what happens during construction. The purple parking lot currently has 26 permitted parking spaces, of which 44 permits are issued, and it generates around $16,000 a year in parking revenues. I want to make it clear, and that anybody that has a purple parking permit today will have a permitted parking spot in another parking lot, the orange parking lot across the street during construction.
Why don't you show that slide? Because the council members are asking 13.
Yeah, since the last slide we talked about.
I'll sneak forward. Yeah, so on here, the purple parking lot is the one on the north side, highlighted on the north side. The orange lot is where we intend to relocate the permitted parking spaces as well as where we intend to direct most public parking to when, when this is under construction through wayfinding. The orange parking lot is less than 200 feet away from, 200 feet further away from the businesses on the north side of Main Street than the purple parking lot. And the walking times, not, not accounting for signal crossings, but walking time would be about a minute more than if you were coming from the parking lot, purple parking lot.
And we want to put a caveat that, that is not accounting for crosswalk times. If you do crosswalk, that's not included in the minute walk time.
Hey, Jeff?
Yes, sir.
And you bring up a good point, Mark, here. Is that signal crossing light going to be trimmed down a little bit? I know I tried to cross it a couple of days ago, and it was just, it was pretty long. So is there consideration to help shorten that timeline?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, we can work with, work with transportation and, and city management, see whether there is opportunities for us to, to work on signal timing as, during the construction to see if we can get people across the street quicker.
Thank you.
Now, again, back in July, when we presented this, there was, there was one other element that was very key to the, the viability of this project, and that was the relocation or the reconstruction of an electric duck bank that currently bifurcates the site and makes it, essentially makes it undevelopable without being relocated. We have continued to work on, on the solution for that new duck bank, and we will be constructing a new 12KV duck bank. The cost of that is currently still estimated at around $620,000. That cost is, again, still going to be offset by the sale of the land at $325,000 and the anticipated construction sales tax of around $320,000. But while we're out there, this gives us a great opportunity to design and complete some system improvements that will improve the, the reliability and the capacity of our electric service for existing buildings and customers, as well as provide some capacity that could benefit the block to the west of, on the west side of Ropesen. We are still in design, but right now, the current estimate for that service, the system enhancements, is around $425,000. Now, this is outside of our development agreement, but I think it's important to also note that we are currently still working with the developer. On a regular basis, we meet with Frank and the Energy Resources Team with the developer to talk about the actual electric service agreement to serve the site, serve this project with electric. That electric service agreement reflects the fact that this project has a significant solar array, and it also reflects the developer's desire to have its energy source from renewable sources as much as possible.
So one of the things we had to think through on this project was solid waste currently on the purple parking lot, where ECO Mesa is proposed to be constructed, there are five enclosures, and we've been working closely with the city's environmental management and sustainability department to, to think about how we can continue to provide service to this block. This is where all of the buildings and all the businesses surrounding the parking lot drop their waste, their solid waste. And so we are looking to move three enclosures to the southwest corner of the historic post office, and these enclosures will be paid for and designed by the, by the, by the developer. And another thing that we've asked the developer to do is to install conduit underneath those. And the reason for that is that while currently, environmental management and sustainability is confident that the, the current demand is sufficient to be handled by regular bins, our job and our, our goals are to continue to transform and enhance downtown, and so we want to future-proof this block for solid waste and ensure that when the time comes, at the right time, that we can easily and economically transition to compactors. A few key projects.
Yes?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Going back to that slide where you're moving the dumpsters, is that currently behind the fenced area of the parking lot of the postal building, federal building?
Currently, no.
Okay. That's not in the parking area of the federal building.
Well, it will be. Mayor, Mayor, Councilmember Duff, currently, if you go out there, there is a fence around the, that back lot of the, of the, of the federal building. However, with this design and reconstruction of the enclosures, that fence will go away, and the enclosures will be open to the alleyway.
So does that mean that parking area will be open?
So the, Councilmember Duff, are you referring to the area behind the post office, the old post office? Is that what you're referring to? That parking area?
The area just north of the new position for the enclosures. Where it looks like car park right now in the photo.
Right, right now, it's not available, and at some point, this will become part of the development of the historic post office. It'll be part of the amenities, that'll be part of that. At some point, it maybe it could be made available for parking, but that'd be sometime in the future, depending on the programming of that building. So I guess ultimately, it could become public parking, but it'll be some time before that's available, considering the construction and all the activity that's going to take place there.
So could it be available during construction at ECO Mesa?
Well, I think what we're challenged with, we're probably going to have construction going on on both of them simultaneously.
And, and Councilmember Duff, in our, we have a, some, a section next on our public outreach, but our commitment has been to the downtown businesses that, that, that if that rear lot of the historic post office is available during ECO Mesa construction, we will make it available for public parking. However, based on the, where, where we are on design with the, the historic post office and the timing, it's very likely that their construction will either be in advance of ECO Mesa or concurrent with ECO Mesa. So we don't want to make a commitment that we can't live up to, but we have committed that if it is available, we will be, make it available to the public.
So therefore, assuming the chain link fence in between the green area and the gray area is going to stay, and then accessway to the dumpsters will be along the alley. Correct?
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
So some key dates that we want to share with you about the project. Zoning clearance must be obtained on or before September 15th, 2020, so that's coming up right around the corner. As Jeff mentioned already, the City Council will be taking action on the G-Plat on or before October 22nd, 2020. Construction permits on or before March 1st, 2021, and both closing and construction are set to start or occur on or before June 1st, 2021, with completion of the project on January 31st, 2023 or before. So you've already seen this slide, but we're coming back to it because there's a piece of this we want to talk about with public outreach. As with any urban infill project, there can be some inconveniences for surrounding businesses, and we wanted to understand what the concerns were from the surrounding businesses and all of downtown, actually, and, and try and address all reasonable concerns as the best of our ability. The developer in concert with city staff, I should say, the developer just presented to DMA on July 15th, and then subsequently, at the next DMA meeting, DMA being the Downtown Mesa Association, the Downtown Mesa Association Board voted to support the project on August 19th. The developer also presented to Rail CDC on July 22nd, and then the developer also held an open downtown meeting on August 19th. Something that's important to us is to continue having discussions with downtown property owners and businesses. In fact, we actually have a meeting later today, around 11:00, with more property owners and businesses, and so we see this as an ongoing, not a one-and-done type of activity, to make sure that we're, we're acting quickly when, when and if there are issues. One thing that we have heard ubiquitously throughout the public meeting process is the concern about parking. Jeff's already talked about that, so I won't reiterate, but it's something we continue to focus on. And the one thing I will add is that we realize that the horizon for this project, if we're starting today, we're going out to the end of completion, is over two years. And so we will continue to monitor and react as conditions change to make sure that all the businesses have sufficient parking for their needs.
I'm sorry. One quick question. On the previous slide, you had the timeline as far as the, the construction, the start of June 1st. Is the electrical improvements, the moving and improving of the electrical line, is that prior to that? Or is that inclusive of the electrical work that needs to be done?
Mayor, Mayor, Councilmember Duff, there's a, a couple elements to that. Our agreement ensures that, through our development agreement, the city commits that we will be out of the way of this project's construction start of June 1st, which means that, that duck bank, at least the, the portion of that that would, would hinder their ability to start construction, will be completed. We are in design, still on the system improvements, so we aren't quite sure what the full impact of that will be or the timeline for, for those, but is, there is a possibility that we will be done and out of the way before the development starts, but there is also a possibility that we will be doing some of the electric improvements concurrently with the start of their construction.
I see. During the electrical improvements, the part that needs to be done prior to the start of the building construction, will that also close the parking lot?
Yes, Councilmember Duff, the, there wouldn't be much, well, actually, I might turn around and look at Frank and see if we have to. The, what we are doing is, is installing a new duck bank, which would require at least a portion of the parking lot to be shut down. I am not sure whether or not that would require the entire parking lot.
Mayor, Councilmember Duff, the, the plan is to essentially build a duplicate duck bank over to the east side of the lot, and so there will be some spillover into the parking spaces while we're putting that duck bank in, but it should be only those spaces that are over on the very far east side of the lot, which some of those spaces are the electric vehicle charging stations, which are very seldom used. So there's very little impact on those parking spaces as we see it now.
Great, I'm glad to hear that. Thank you, Frank.
Thanks, Matt. So going back to the public outreach and how we've been handling that, another thing that has arisen from those meetings and that we want to make sure we address is the continuing need for communication. All, all of the businesses and property owners have said that, you know, they, if there's going to be a disruption or a loud noise one day, they need to know so they can plan for that. And so the developer is creating kind of an information share website that would have a 30-day look ahead so that business owners and property owners will know what's coming in terms of construction and any impacts, all that may happen to their businesses. There's also going to be some kind of combination of an email or flyer so that the businesses aren't necessarily having to go out to the website, the information is being sent to them if they so desire.
Mayor and Council, I think it's important for us to note that we have had, received a, a number of, of letters of support for this project from downtown businesses and property owners, but we also have received a letter of, I wouldn't say it's of opposition, but it's a letter of concern that lists quite a few concerns with how this project will impact surrounding businesses and property owners. We are, that is actually the group that we are, are meeting with again today to see whether we continue, continue to work with them and address those concerns. With that, though, however, we're happy to take council questions, discussion.
I would like to just make one comment that I am very supportive of this project. I think it is definitely something that is beneficial for downtown. It's innovative, it's mid to higher incomes with people who have expendable income, helping those businesses. I realize it might be tough during construction. We are committed as the Downtown Merchants Association, Mesa Association, and City Council to work through, and Jeff's office, of course, to work through all of the issues day by day, the ones that you can't anticipate. But I would like to also bring light to the parking concerns, that walking just a little distance to your parking is actually beneficial in the downtown. I'm not talking about long distances, but the intersection of coming across other businesses on your walk to a downtown, to a business, is economically wonderful because there's other businesses you come across and you stop in or are more aware. Usually, there's more expenditures made in that trip when you have that intersection. And that's why you see also downtown centralize their parking, is because the value of that land being available for building or tax spaces and having the intersection of not only the expenditures for the businesses, but for people visiting a downtown and having the intersection of their neighbors and, and their community. So it is supposed to be a walkable, enjoyable area, so the distance of walking just a little bit further is not bad. If you think about going to a shopping mall, especially our larger ones, you can see that the distance that you walk until you reach the business is considerably further than even us moving the parking from the orange parking lot to the purple parking lot. And we also have that front parking area, especially for pickups, and we can definitely work with the businesses if they need to be shortened, so there are just more of a pickup zones and not a long-term parking. So I'm very supportive of the project and very willing and will be hands-on with all the businesses and property owners to make sure that it is successful for them and for the project as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Duff. Mr. Luna?
Mayor, thank you so much. I'm also very supportive of this project. I think it's a great idea. I think it's going to real, again, for the past seven years that I've been on City Council, our effort has been to revitalize the downtown area, and certainly, this project is going to do that. So I'm very excited to bring him in. I know Jeff and Jeff have worked very hard to work out the details in terms of what needs to be done to ensure that this project is successful and that it also benefits the city of Mesa. So thank you, gentlemen, for working hard on this project, and thank you, Councilmember Duff. I know this is in your district, but I want to let you know that I'm completely in support of this project.
Thank you, Mr. Luna. Other comments? Mr. Freeman?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I, I didn't have any reservations about this, however, I did meet with some of the property owners who happen to be in District 1, and I understand their concerns and, and how this new building and change will affect our downtown businesses, but one of the things that I'm really appreciative is staff working so hard with the adjoining business and property owners. I think that's critical in our roles that we, that we utilize, our skill sets to do that and meet their concerns. I'm also, you know, about this project, we've been able to integrate renewable energy into the project. I'm also, you know, about this project, we've been able to integrate renewable energy into the project. Solar, I'd be interested sometime, Frank, about how many KW will be, you know, the solar rays on the building, but how that integrates into our city Mesa electrical system. And it shows that other developments that come in the future can put in solar, which I feel is an important component. The other thing is the electric cars. They will be more prevalent in the near future. The mayor bought one recently, so it's supposed to be his wife's car, but he drives it more than she does. However, have, go ahead, sir.
I'm just saying, you're getting me in trouble. Could you skip over that part, please?
Will do. But again, reaching out to the property owners and business owners are critical and just getting the information out. I appreciate the work being utilized to make the infrastructure west of this project, having more electricity for future development. I like that, and I appreciate that. The other thing is the G-plate being used for this build-out. G-plates, you know, we work so hard to create these platforms for businesses to utilize, so I appreciate that being used. And then, you know, finally, we have some density coming to downtown Mesa. We have the groves on Main, we have the grid in construction, and this will be shortly around the corner. Hopefully, others follow suit. So I will wait for the other meetings you have today, Jeff and Jeff, with the other landowners, and I will be meeting with them also after your meeting. But regardless, thank you for all you do, and this is a great project for downtown area. With that, I'll end. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Council, any other comments?
Well, I'll just join and say amen to what Councilmembers Duff and Luna and Freeman have said. I think I've previously expressed my enthusiasm for this project. It's, I think, for a long time, we've known that really the main missing ingredient in downtown Mesa has been people. So this is great. This is going to bring people to, you know, occupy the wide streets of Main Street once again. It's bringing utility customers to our downtown, it's bringing retail customers to our downtown. As far as the G-plate goes, this is, this is great, because we're actually putting property back on the tax rolls that has been public property previously and not generated any property tax. So it's, there's really, you know, I see very little cause for concern on traditionally, when you utilize a G-plate. Also, I appreciate what Mr. Freeman said earlier. This gives us an opportunity to actually improve our electric infrastructure downtown. You know, the infrastructure of downtown is old, and if we want to continue to see new businesses, new residential developments occurring up and down Main Street, we've got to increase the electric capacity. So this is, there, no question, there's going to be some growing pains, and I empathize with the businesses that will be impacted. I appreciate the developer's commitment to being, having good communication, and we'll do everything we can to soften the blow and the inconvenience during construction. But I think shortly after construction, this is, you know, the value that it's going to add to those businesses will become very apparent. So I'll just add my enthusiasm to what's been expressed earlier. But at the same time, again, I express our commitment to working with the existing retail shops there to make sure that this is, the negative impacts during construction are minimized. Anything else, council, on this topic? If not, I think we're still making our way through Monday's agenda. Council, any, this was, that was item 4A. Any other items on Monday's agenda that you'd like additional information on? Okay, seeing none, let's go back to the agenda for this meeting. Item 2 on this agenda is the correction of the term of a previous appointment and appointment to the public safety personnel retirement system. I think that's pretty evident as to what's going on there. Is there any questions, or is there a motion for approval on that? Yes, Mr. Luna. Are you making?
I'm just making a motion, Mayor.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. Mr. Luna has made the motion, seconded by Mr. Thompson. Any discussion on that? If not, we'll do a roll call vote, so please unmute your microphones.
Aye.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Freeman. How do you vote? Thank you. Mr. Whitaker, was that you voting?
Yes, aye.
Thank you. Mr. Arretia. Thank you. Councilmember Duff.
Aye.
Councilmember Luna.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. I vote aye as well, so that passes unanimously. The next item on our agenda for this meeting, item 3, is current event summary, including meetings and conferences attended. Council, anything you'd like to share with us? Go ahead, Councilmember Duff.
Yes, I just wanted to remind everybody that this afternoon, Councilmember Luna and I will be doing a community conversation at 4:00 PM via Zoom. There's an invite on Facebook, on our, you can find it on our council pages, and it will be with Police Chief Ken Koss, talking about the Critical Incidents Review Board and the improvements they made, as well as entering a dialogue of question and answers about public safety. So that's this afternoon at 4:00 PM via Zoom. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Council, any other items you'd like to share? Mr. Luna.
Yes, Mayor. Yesterday, I attended a National League of Cities meeting on large councils, and they wanted to know how municipalities across the United States were supporting our local school district. So I was proud to announce that the city of Mesa worked in conjunction with the Gilbert Schools, as well as Mesa Public Schools, and allocated $7 million towards the purchase of devices. So kudos to Mesa for doing that, working with our school districts. We know that during this pandemic, education is certainly key in our minds as kids are going back to school or working out of their homes for their education. So anyway, I was very proud that I was able to share that. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Council, other events you'd like to share with us?
I'll just make note that this week, I had an opportunity to participate in a couple of chamber events. One was a Java with Giles event, and then another East Valley Mayor's event. And appreciated the opportunity to talk to large groups in both of those. Also, it's been an interesting week. I've been asked to serve on three or four different panels associated with the National Republican Convention, highlighting the things that we're doing in Mesa, having to do with, again, the infrastructure improvements and affordable housing and other topics. So it was, I was proud to represent Mesa on the national stage a few times this week. And then also, I'm looking forward next week. I don't want to do, maybe this is a spoiler alert, but I'm looking forward to working with Visit Mesa. I know Councilmember Duff serves on the Visit Mesa board, and they've been very busy planning a staycation promotional activity campaign that I think I'm very excited about and anxious to participate. So I look forward to talking more about that next week when that is launched. But I've been working a little bit on that with Councilmember Duff and Visit Mesa this week. If there's nothing else, council, Mr. Brady, can you remind us what our schedule looks like in the next week?
Sure, Mayor. And just to, just to inform the council that promotion by Visit Mesa is being underwritten by the Mesa Cares dollars. So it is, again, another program coming out of your Economic Development Department to support that. So we're excited to work with Visit Mesa on making that happen. Just a reminder, council, we'll be meeting on Monday, August 31, to go through the agenda that you just reviewed. And then we don't anticipate that we will have a Thursday study session on September 3, because we do not have a council meeting on September 7 because of Labor Day. And then after that, we'll probably more likely have quite a few more presentations during the study sessions, both on Mondays and Thursdays after that. So at least for now, we'll see you on the 31st. No study session on the 3rd, no council meeting on the 7th because of Labor Day, and then we'll pick up from there. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Thank you, Mr. Thompson, seconded by Mr. Luna. Please unmute your microphones, and we'll have a voice vote. All in favor of the motion to adjourn, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Are there any opposed? Thank you. We are adjourned.